I always believed that education is like a triangle. The student, the parents, and the teacher. If any one of those three doesn't work, the student doesn't get educated. For every 100, I will state the statistics that I have. For every 100 Hispanic and African-American children or young people who go into school in the first year, only 50% graduate. And what we're doing is we're creating an undereducated, second-class citizen that has no education, no training, and they're out on the streets selling drugs. We need to establish the division of youth services.
I don't have to wait to go on the council to do something to tell you what I'm going to do. Seven days ago, last Thursday, I found out about the red and tan bus situation. I went as chair of advisory board to New Jersey Transit, met with Jamie Finkel, the new New Jersey Transit board member. I've been to New Jersey Transit five times in the past week. I met with the New Jersey Transit Board this morning with Ray Graves, councilman from Bayonne. We both spoke. We both took the time to go to New Jersey Transit this morning and speak. And Councilman Foley is here. He can tell you that tomorrow morning, New Jersey Transit is meeting with Mayor Healey, with Senator Cunningham, and the entire Hudson delegation to have a solution. That solution restores the four-bus service and the 99S bus service by giving it to different carriers. New Jersey Transit is very responsible. They heard everything you heard, and I spent the entire week working on this issue. I don't have to go on the council to help you, but I'm happy that I was able to.
Doug, one of the main problems in Jersey City, obviously, is the education. But it's also the family structure. And if the kids do not have a structure at home, then it's not going to work as far as the education goes. You have to work with the youth because definitely the youth eventually will go into the crime. Because if you don't take care of the youth young, then they have nowhere to go. There's no direction. So it's the base of the city and the community to take care of our children. Not every children has a home that, obviously, we all have. You're all here because you all come from great homes, obviously, or you wouldn't care. So we need to build some type of base for the youth of Jersey City, and that will combat the crime problems.
And how do we do it? How do we make our government make better choices? We ask our children make better choices, but does our government make better choices? And they make the best decisions for us. And I believe it's about making the government work for us. It's about removing conflicts of interest. We've already started to do it with pay-to-play reform, contracting and redevelopment pay-to-play, which is having impact on campaign finance. I believe we need to go further. Ban campaign contributions in city offices. Can you believe that? You can walk in today and Mayor Healey and envelop with a campaign donation. We need to implement a strict methods code.
Children spend eight hours of the day in school and 16 hours at home. If the parents take care of the children, like I can tell you, I have raised the children. I have raised children in the school and my nephews and nieces. Two of my nephews are serving the USRV. And my children are physicians, and they didn't come just because they were born. We had to take care of them.
There's no leadership. The court system, the police, the authorities have been taken away from police. The authorities have been taken away from teachers, parents today. All they want to do, if the teacher does something, they want to sue. We have to go back to leadership. We have to have politicians who are willing to stand up and say enough is enough. Let's cut it out. Let's bring back discipline. Let's bring back pride. Let's bring our cities back. You look around this city here, and come to the Hilltop where I am.
You still have time?
I'm sorry. Come to the Hilltop where I am. The people are very vocal. We have probably one of the best neighborhoods on the island. It is fantastic there. We have low crime. The people keep the streets clean. And you know why? Because we go out there and we ask people to do it. We have the leadership in our neighborhood. We have good people, and that's what we have to have throughout the city.
They don't have the basic supplies to work with. They don't have a copy machine. They don't have an updated computer system. The lights don't work. The air conditioning doesn't work. They don't have writing paper. We have to give our teachers some tools to work with and, of course, give the kids some structure to live by, some discipline to live by. Teach kids respect, and they'll give you respect.
You'll know that you can break this cycle when you know that the words are backed up by action. And what I can promise you is that you're not just going to see me around election time. I'm not just going to be here at this stage or knocking on your door around election time. That when we have a community problem, a policing issue, or some crime issue, or public safety issue, I'm going to be out in the community, walking the streets, and talking to the neighbors, and working with our community and police officers to resolve.
Some of that has to do with let's get the community being involved and vigilant and open lines of communication between the liaison officers, the police departments, and the community itself. Let's start utilizing the neighborhood associations to start getting more information out there. Not just at the captain meetings, but let's start actually building the bridges between the police department and the citizens, and let's make it real. Let's reorganize city government a little bit more. Pushing for tariff services with the county, merging duplicate departments, departments that aren't actually doing much within the city, such as the city staff office that hasn't done anything probably for the last four years. And let's use the technology to further our goals, using the websites, using social media. Let's start making departments like the construction department a little bit more active and not just wait there for two or three days without a response.
You know, I do believe it takes the village to raise its child.
Sure. I will not be working as a rubber stamp for the mayor. I'll stand for the honesty. That's how I did my work as a chairman for Jersey City Redevelopment Authority and as a senior planner for the County of Hudson. I will not be a party to any interest people. I believe in the process, governance, proper management. I will bring in the proper professional people.
In 1988, I was sitting on the city council. There was a motion, a resolution, to tear down the Lower East Theater for Harts Mountain. The mayor's office was very much in favor of this resolution. I was the fifth book that saved the Lowes from being destroyed and demolished. I was a persona non grata in the mayor's office for a month because I voted against what he wants, but I voted my conscience.
I will go with the people that have the blessing. You see, this is why I'm running independently, because I don't want to hold favors for no political machine. And I will go according to what brought me into being a councilperson at large, and that will be the people.
It's going to be about mobilizing community. As I said earlier, I'm going to be reaching out to folks throughout Jersey City, from all parts of Jersey City. I'm going to be reaching out to the Washington Parks Association, the Riverview Neighborhood Association, AARP, the Heights Community Coalition. I'm asking you to not only support this position, but I'm going to ask you to get engaged.
You know, let's treat these issues as community issues and community campaigns. Let's get the details about the ordinances out there, about the policies out there. Let's bring the community in as partners. Let's bring out community partners, both private and public sector, and as lobby my colleagues through town hall meetings and neighborhood associations to actually make a difference and hear what the constituents want to see happen.
Actually, all of last year, I shadowed, of course, in negotiations at Seton Hall University, and I found a book, The Art of Negotiating, and a book called Up by Lee Miller. It taught me a lot after chairing committees at New Jersey Transit and the Board of Education for a number of years. You have to listen. If I have a nine-member board, which is, I've always been on, and I have minority position, I have to watch and listen what my fellow members want in order for me to change their minds, understand their positions, and get them to come over to my point of view.
In order to represent the people the right way, you have to be able to vote the right way. And the only way you're going to be able to vote the right way is if you're not depending on the county or the city and just work for the people. Obviously, if you watch the votes of the council, you see where the majority goes. We all know who they work for. So stop making them work for the county, and then they can answer to you and not to the county executive or the mayor. I would go to the people like I've done for years, like we did with the Waldo Railroad Yards, the Journal Square fight. Get busloads of people. Go to Trenton if we have to. Go to City Hall. And we've gone down to City Hall with 200, 250 people, and we told them, you're not going to do something. And the only way the city council listens is when the people come down en masse and they object to something. If you sit home and you do nothing, they'll get away with it. To achieve your goals, you need public support. To achieve your goals, you need to negotiate. You need to understand the dynamics of your group and work towards a common end. I've worked in middle management. I've run my own company. I've led my neighbor association. I've led good government advocacy groups, all in Jersey City, and also worked as a team member with others to do that. In 2007, the city council voted down redevelopment pay-to-play. Two years later, we worked together with some council members and some community groups to get it done.
We're all here to represent the citizens of Jersey City, not the mayor's office. I'm not afraid of being unpopular, and I've always answered to my own drummer. We're here for you.
This is a larger question than just the SIDs. Small businesses throughout Jersey City are struggling. They run into issues, not just what they should be doing, which is drawing and serving their customers, but they run into situations every day and headaches and problems dealing with the city. Getting businesses built out, getting no response, poor response, plans left sitting in the buildings department for months and months and months as they burn through their capital. We need our city to open up. There needs to be a small business facility that, if necessary, walks businesses through, lets them know what they need to do so that they do comply with code and then can get their businesses open and serve ourselves. The SIDs are a novel approach to deal with the failure in city services. Our city is not providing it to the businesses, so they have to do it themselves. What our businesses need in our neighborhoods is safe streets, clean streets, and then they can serve their customers. It's not rocket science. Our city just has to stop being dysfunctional and deliver what it should. Thank you.
Well, definitely, I'm all for businesses. You know, I'm an entrepreneur myself. But definitely, before I take any action into any, you know, political whatever they're going to do, I need to research it. If it's good for the whole community, not just the area, I will go for it. So in other words, I will have to do research in the matter and vote accordingly to the best interest of everybody.
If you look at Bergen Line Avenue, it's a vibrant shopping area because there is parks. Here in Jersey City, we have muni meters on Central Avenue. And if you speak no micro union, you'll understand how difficult it is to survive in that kind of environment. Nobody in Jersey City politics listens to the feedback from the people who spend their lives in these storms. At the council level, we need to listen and act accordingly. I believe we need to continue supporting special improvement, and we need to expand the efforts to keep them alive.
I want to share with you something at New Jersey City University that we've done. We obtained a grant from the Department of Housing and Urban Development that put together a public-private partnership where New Jersey City University was working with the Jersey City Economic Development Corporation, our small business development incubator, Rising Tide Capital, a nonprofit organization, and TD Bank, and we obtained federal funding to support that. We need to get innovative and find new ways to find funding, to develop the kind of public and private partnerships that are necessary in today's economy to continue and maintain the kind of thriving economy that we want to see here in Jersey City.
Listen, the state funding is coming down all across the board, whether it's education, UEZs, or any other area. What we need to do is find and partner with, like he said, you know, we need to find public and private partnerships that are going to allow us to get federal grants, state grants, and private sector grants from foundations to actually start taking advantage of some of those opportunities that are out there that, quite frankly, we're not taking advantage of. We need to pull our monies from local initiatives. We need to work closer with the state EDA, which is the Economic Development Association, to make sure that they're putting in whatever they can to make sure that our SIDs are working better. And we need to bring in specialists, experts from other sister cities that have already experienced this type of situation, not to be as paid consultants, but actually as partners, and have them come in and give us some expertise on how we can combat those.
All right, I want to ask you all a question. Why do we have an SID when we have a DPW and a JCIA? Isn't that their function? Money? Think about it. All that money that goes into the SID is work that should be done by those two departments, and they've delegated it out, and they say, oh, it's state money, it's federal money. That money is your tax money every time you pay taxes. So think about that.
For the past six years, the quality of life around Journal Square and other special improvement districts have gone down. The merchants are saying that they are being double taxed. I don't think there's a need for SID unless it's properly managed or governed properly. This is another form of bureaucracy which should be disbanded immediately.
But I sit on the Hudson County Economic Development Strategy Committee, and we discuss this issue because it's part of the funding for the people that sit with us. But part of the urban enterprise zone is that we get a 3% tax, so people come here because it's 3% tax. So that's a big thing. We should petition the governor that he not eliminate the tax. I know he needs the money to do the budget, but we need the money also. But I agree. Then you have to look to this question, probably a lot of people don't know. What do you spend the urban enterprise zone money on in Jersey City? You spend it on policing, street cleaning, and extra work in those districts. So you have to go back and see why can't the departments do that? We have to balance the budget and see how we can go back to do it. But the other issue is there's transportation credits. Goyer Foods is moving into Jersey City at the Rockefeller Project and County Road, and they're bringing 200 jobs. There are other mechanisms to get funding. I don't know why the people in Jersey City don't do that. When I'm on the council with my councilmates, we'll be doing that.
Each part of Jersey City has a different need. If you go to Greenville, that's a different need than Journal Square. As a child, when I went to the square, we had three theaters, and it was great to go down there as a family and experience what the square offered at that time. Obviously, Square has nothing now. So everybody knows what the need is in Journal Square, and then that would feed off into the Marion section, into the Hilltop. And everybody knows that the Lowes has to be the key to that area. Okay? The Lowes has to be the place that's going to strive to make it better. And then go into the other areas and look what the UEZ can do for the other areas. Maybe building certain businesses in there that will attract people from outside other areas to come in and build the economy up in those certain areas. But there's got to be different plans for each different area. It's not one whole city when it comes down to what is needed in different places.
And what the governor is doing now is an attempt to dismantle the UEZ and the SID and take the money that those organizations have for his own budgetary needs. The SID also, they've been laying people off to the point where you don't have a viable organization. So we've got to fight for that against the governor.
What they should probably do is run that pipeline down the Hudson River. It'll cost them more money to drill it, but it'll be safer for the residents of Jersey City than bringing it down Montgomery Street.
If you put people at risk, no matter if they come back to you and say, no, it's a small percentage, then there should be no percentage. If there's a 1% risk of someone getting hurt, it shouldn't happen.
There have been a number of explosions on this type of pipeline. The last time, I think it was not too long ago, in Texas somewhere.
My thought is, City of Bayonne is in favor of it. It should go under the river, as Mr. Chiock said, and just be drilled under the river and go to New York that way. And that's my opinion on it. No one's answered the question about whether they've taken any contributions. I haven't taken any contributions.
I'm against it because it's dangerous. You know, you never know what's going to happen. You know, I'm not thinking about the money that it's bringing, you know.
No, I have not taken any grant or any aid from this Spectra Energy at all. I'm totally against it. It's unacceptable to have a pipeline going through residential areas of any city.
Myself and my running man and the committed service team, we're both opposed to the pipeline. And like I said, neither of us have accepted donations or contributions from Spectra. Thank you. And the explosion will reach the middle of St. Joseph's parking lot on Baldwin Avenue, which is right across the street from my house. That is the most dangerous thing this city could ever allow into Jersey City. As far as the contributions, I have accepted no contributions. I wouldn't even accept money from the HCDO or the HDO. That's the Hudson County Democratic Organization.
I haven't taken any money from any agents or Spectra directly or indirectly. I'm completely opposed to it. There's no question about it. I don't think that anyone would be in favor of a pipeline going through the middle of our city. And Spectra Energy has not proven, not one bit, that there is no reason why they cannot go through the river.
Hell, no. No pipeline in Jersey City. I have not taken any contributions from Spectra. I have not taken any contributions from their registered lobbyists. Our area is too dense. We have too many critical transportation routes, and it will hurt our future development and tax base. It will seriously impact negatively our ratables. I have worked with NoGasPipelines.org to help publicize their efforts.
The only way you're going to raise more tax bases is if we bring more businesses to Jersey City and redevelop the land that is buring. They're never going to lose, they're never going to lay off their friends, so you're never going to lose the higher jobs. So it's going to be the smaller people that are going to be laid off. This is your opportunity now to get somebody else that's independent. There's a couple of us on here that are independent of the county and the mayor. And this is your opportunity now to see that happen. And then if that happens, then things can change. Until then, it's the same story.
I can't believe that with all the wealth on the waterfront and all the financial firms, that the City of Jersey City never bothered to say, by the way, we have a structural problem with our finances. Can you help us? I think it's a sham that they haven't done that. I think there are people smarter than me certainly that could help us figure this out. But one of the things I've been thinking about, you know, the revol, to me, is the biggest problem we're facing, but why can't we get those people to come in and figure out how to do a revol that gives us money, doesn't take the money out of the Heights people, and starts taxing people in a way that we do get the money? I agree with PJ that they're laying off people at the lowest end. They're laying off the clerks. They're laying off the janitors, and they're giving raises and buyouts to the people at the top end. Let's get a structural audit and start to solve Jersey City's problems so we all can live here and retire and live our lives out in Jersey City.
I am the director of Veterans Affairs. They're abolishing the entire office so that when veterans come to City Hall and their families come to City Hall, there'll be nobody there to assist them. And so the city is saying they're trying to save money, but this morning I heard about a couple of people getting $10,000 raises. Okay? And that's the problem.
See, I'm going to bring a priority-based budgeting approach to Jersey City and its budgeting issues. What is priority-based budgeting? You know, it's where we, we're going to conduct some sort of performance audit in Jersey City. We're going to look at what are the different programs and units in Jersey City and how effectively are they really, are they really producing for the people of Jersey City? So what are the things that we prioritize and say we want most in Jersey City? And when we conduct a priority-based budgeting approach, we'll put the things that are most important to the people of Jersey City, and those things are most effective and efficient in getting the job done, and at the same time, identify those programs that are wasteful or duplication of services, and we can begin to eliminate those sort of programs and services that aren't serving the people of Jersey City and probably are filled with middle management and other fat from patronage positions and things like that that aren't being efficient because there are really no show jobs.
We'll start with the people who have got two jobs or three jobs in the city. We should cut it out. Number two, I will bring a management team to do complete overhaul of the city administration and find out from the consultants where we are spending double layers, two departments. I strongly suggest a merger of DPI and WI. There are departments like autonomous agencies, they do the duplicate job. Jersey City, HCDCO, and JCRA have got duplicate jobs. The officers over there get unbelievable, and the consultants and attorneys get over $4 million a year contracts. And Jersey City residents are not getting a fair share of any jobs which are given to the developers.
You can increase ratables by developing. You build out 20,000 more units, and the added revenue may actually balance the budget. You build out 40,000 units, you may have a surplus. Then you can build parks and recreation areas. It's basic economics. We can't petition the government to give us the money. Grants won't do it. We have to find a way to do it here. We can create jobs and we can lower taxes by building out what we've got here to work with.
It's going to take time, and this is what we need to do. We need to start fresh, and you have, the voter needs to take the opportunity to elect the right people in every election. We need to start fresh. Out with the old and bring the new. Thank you.
We are, we need to stop the practice of hiring back retired department heads as consultants while they still receive a pension. We need to stop buying out sick days and giving them extra money and finding ways to start retaining some of the intellectual people that we have there and start training people so that when these department heads who are making $140,000 a year or whatever are replaced by people who are actually going to be earning a lesser salary but capable of fulfilling those positions afterwards. Let's start streamlining some of the revenue generating divisions, you know, making them more accessible, making sure that they start building even more. And let's start figuring out a way that we can actually make Jersey City a better place to live.
We need to start running our city like it's 2011, not 1911. We can't, we no longer can do year-on-year budgeting. Just look at what we spent last year to figure out next year or this year. We need to bring planning tools to our budgeting process. We need to look at an office occupancy tax since the state will not let us do a payroll tax. If you'd like to learn more about planning tools, such as priority-based budgeting or outcome budgeting, you can go to my website, OneJerseyCity.org. We're looking to introduce that to Jersey City, whether it's from the council, from the public. Thank you. We were going to pay proactively no taxes when the waterfront was developed. Well, guess what? I've seen my tax bill go up ever since they built the waterfront. I also got to tell you something else. I said in a police meeting where we were told there would be no need for any additional police services in downtown Jersey City when they built the waterfront. Well, guess where most of the police services go? On the waterfront.
I will ask the resident to cooperate in making their community clean. Right now, a lot of, you know, people that own houses and tennis, they're doing it. You know, they're cleaning the sidewalks and make sure that they leave it goes in the waste basket, you know, in the street. But we need to get more people involved and then...
First of all, I don't know why the Dove Ready, Willing, and Able program was disbanded. I guess it was for budget cuts, but it was a great program that helped people who needed second chances and people who were disabled. So I hope we can find a way to get that back. But the other thing is, I'm a big advocate of bringing the school kids in. I think it is a neighborhood issue. I think we could have posters. I think we could have pride. We could have neighborhood groups. We could go out to the neighborhood groups. I mean, in the area I live, I live in a little Italian village downtown. People still sweep the streets. We have to get that program back. We have to get people have pride.
Once again, I think the biggest problem is the Board of Education. Come to Dickets in high school at lunchtime after the kids, 3,000 or whatever, are turned out to the streets and see the pigpen in the neighborhood. They just throw their garbage right in the street. You know how many times I've asked the Board of Education to solve this problem? How many times I've asked them to keep the kids in at lunchtime? Most of your filth and dirt is coming from the kids.
We have to take ownership of our own communities. You know, I constantly pick up things right in front of my property whenever I see something messed up. It's a matter of pride in our own properties and making sure that those who are renting units from landlords have the same type of respect for their communities. It's not just all the kids. It's not just children that are doing this. It's all the citizens, and it's all our problem to make sure that we take care of it. Let's get the ready, and I agree with my teammate. We need to get the Ready, Willing, and Able program back on track.
In my neighborhood association, we have regular cleanups once a month that barely makes a dent. The city has to enforce the codes. The city has to find landlords and building owners that don't clean up. We need to work with our state representatives, there's elections also on November 8 for them too, to tax plastic bags and give monetary credits for returned plastic bags to keep them from going on our streets.
I think Jersey City should look at next-door neighbors like Bayonne, how the streets are clean there because the codes are enforced. Here, there goes your SIDs. Here, there goes your SIDs. What have they done about it? And we spend about $4 million to a half a million on each SID for not cleaning up the streets. I think a public awareness program should be throughout the school system, throughout the responsibility should be with the municipal government also to emphasize awareness. Thank you.
As long as we keep on giving our tax abatements, we're not going to get any ratables. Because when you give a tax abatement, you don't get ratables. That money goes to the City of Jersey City. It's not applied to the Board of Education, it's not shared with the county, and that's something that we have to look at. In 2013, the revote is going to be done again. In 1988, that damaged a lot of residents here in Jersey City.
We need to hire guys with brooms and wheelbarrows. And we can do that by getting rid of the sweepers that take the garbage from the curb and sweep it into the street. It works in Union City, it works in Bayonne, it could work here.
I led a coalition in 2005 to 2007 where we brought people together along the MLK Corridor and we cleaned up numerous vacant lots throughout the area. We brought together people, parents, children, youth, faith-based organizations, just concerned residents coming together to clean up and beautify our streets.
It's great to compare ourselves to Union City and Bayonne, but the reality of it is we're a major city. There's 270,000 people out in Jersey City. And each neighborhood is different as far as economic reasons and therefore lower economic areas are dirtier than downtown. I live downtown. I'm from Siff in Vanwa, that's where I was born. Big difference. Okay? We should maybe bring back more of community service or use the prisoners and apply the prisoners to the streets. So this way, it's not economically hurting the city, and we're utilizing them.
We need a city that is accountable to its residents. We need leadership on our city council, and that's what I want to bring. I know that we can work together and speak with one voice for safe streets and a vibrant city, for stable taxes and sensible spending, and for sound solutions.
And I have an offer that you can't refuse. Elect me in November 8. If you want to see a better managed city, transparency in the city, and a good governance, November 8, 15D is the number.
You're going to vote for two council people? I hope you make me one of them. If not, I'm not going anywhere. But anyway, thank you very much for showing up today, and I'm going to City Hall if you have a problem.
C-16, C-17, the Matt Perez team will be here working for you as we have been for years, and we are bringing new fresh faces with great ideas and experienced voices to the council.
If you really want to get things done, you want people who are proven to get things done, if you want priority-based budgeting and a performance audit that will eliminate waste and duplication of services, if you want to reduce crime by engaging our community and really mobilizing our community to work together with police officers to reduce crime and improve quality of life, then I urge you on November 8, please vote for the committed to service team, Rolando Levaro 12C and Viola Richardson 11C.
Listen, I've worked for the city for 36 years. I know where all the bedbugs are in this city. I fought hard, numerous battles in Journal Square with the Hilltop Neighborhood Association, which is the largest neighborhood association in the city. And I'm going to tell you something. Several years ago, the director of the Port Authority, when we had the railroad war, the Waldo Railroad Yard fight, said to me, "I was a fool." He said, "Nobody's ever beaten the Port Authority, and you are crazy." That was from the director of the Port Authority. Well, guess what? We beat the Port Authority. We're the only ones, and that's how I'll fight for you on the city council.
I'm not a politician. I'm your neighbor. If you'll let me, I'll be your voice. I have run for, I have participated in many boards as a member, Level 99, the FSO Board, founder board. Right now, at the present time, I'm a member of the Children of Faith Parade Multicultural Festival. In that hall, I have a substitute teacher certificate and associate of art and science in public policy and urban study from San Francisco College. As a resident of Jersey City for the corporation and making and keeping the community clean for a better Jersey City for everyone. Thank you. Oh, and vote for me, please. 11F. Remember, F for family.
If I had a choice, and I wanted to be here with you, if I had a choice, if somebody told me that I could get you the red and tan bus back if I didn't come here tonight because I was at something else, I would have done that because it's more important to help you than to be seen as helping you. Thank you.
What we have to remember going forward is we have to be creative, and we can't just lay dormant. We have to think out of the box and we have to have some type of stimulation for the city. And I mean the whole city. Okay? We have to also work with the budget, and what we got to realize is we can't take in $10 and spend 12. We have to spend eight and save two. This way, we don't have a deficit, we don't have to raise the taxes. And the other thing is, we have to work together as six wards, and that is what the councilman at ward should do, is to bring the six wards together to become one city. It's not, "I live in the Heights, I live in Marion, I live downtown." I live in Jersey City, because that's what I tell people when I leave this area.
Without industry, commerce, and development, this town could wither and die. As councilman, I will work on legislation that encourages development in order to create jobs. The council can cultivate an environment for development, but industry and commerce creates jobs.